Not without audio, I know.
Well, there is, it's recording on LibriVide.
Don't forget we're streaming, guys. Even though we're not talking, we're still streaming. Is there audio now?
There's audio.
Okay, very good. Okay, Michelle?
Um, yeah.
Okay. We're good, Rob? Anything to hear? Good sound? Very good. Okay. Very good, thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the February 18th, 2025, meeting of the Emerson Governing Body. This meeting is being videotaped and may be viewed on your local public access channel, either 36 or 77. The meetings are also available live on YouTube. For those who be present, in case of a fire, please follow the fire exit signs above the doors and exit calmly. Mr. O'Brien, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask you to remain standing in memory of William E. Price Jr., Billy. He used to attend our mayor and council meetings to offer suggestions and ask thought-provoking questions, and every December he faithfully brought cookies to the clerk's office and to the DPW, so from all of our staff to enjoy. Uh, Billy will be missed. Thank you. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law, adequately noticed pursuant to NJSA 10-4-10. A sunshine notice for this meeting was noticed to the record at the Ridgewood News on February 5th, 2025, posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website and has remained continuously posted as required under the statute. Ms. Ryan, would you please call the roll call of the governing body? Sure. Mayor DePaola, present. Councilwoman Rice?
Here.
Councilwoman Sayers?
Here.
Councilwoman McGuire is absent. Council President Argenzia?
Here.
Councilwoman Timmerman?
Here.
And Councilwoman Chalino?
Here.
Okay, um, may I have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Jill McGuire from tonight's meeting?
How many can I motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jill is excused. We knew prior that she would not be attending this evening. This evening, we are happy to honor Dan O'Brien, a 2024 Hometown Hero Award recipient. In late 2024, uh, I nominated Dan for this award, uh, to Congressman Gottheimer's office, and he was selected. I would now like to read the proclamation. Dan, would you like to come up and join me? Come over here.
He used to be on that side.
No. I'm gonna move the mics a little bit closer. I'm gonna read from this bigger one because I'm getting older. Whereas Dan O'Brien has been an Emerson resident, the camera's that way if you wanna look, um, has been an Emerson resident since 1987 and has owned Academy Electric, a generator business also located in Emerson, since 1981. And whereas Dan has been a longtime volunteer in Emerson and the surrounding communities, and he is an ex-chief of the Emerson Volunteer Fire Department and is a current member of the Westwood Fire Department, where he has just received his 50 years of service award. And whereas in addition to volunteering as a firefighter, Dan is active in promoting Emerson's business community as the Vice President of the Emerson Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Dan has a generous and philanthropic spirit and often donates his time and resources to help organizations, causes, and those in need, especially some Emerson Rex sports. Whereas through connection in the National Emergency Generator Dealers Association, Dan began assisting the people of North Carolina, especially those in the mountain areas who were recently devastated by Hurricane Helene. And whereas with some of these regions completely destroyed, these residents have been without power since the hurricane's landfall in September of 2024, thereby restricting their access to well water and heat. And whereas with Dan's mission clear, he has devoted considerable time and resources to helping them get temporary power as permanent restoration is not expected until March 2025, by seeking donations from generator vendors as well as the community at large, in addition to having his employees service portable generators and light towers, which were in his shop. And whereas, as a result of Dan's efforts and his shared spirit of generosity, Dan was able to make the 1,500-mile round-trip trek to deliver 14 portable generators, including 5,000-watt portable generator from Winco Generators, along with 1,000 feet of 10-4 cord from Cooper Electric Supply to rescue, to a rescue center in Godfather, North Carolina, to help power-affected homes on November 8th, 2024. And whereas Dan also brought his own equipment, including his Skid steer Bobcat, to North Carolina, which he personally used to clear debris and help clear the driveways of residences in North Carolina. And whereas I, Daniel DePaola, nominated Dan to be a hometown hero by Congressman Gottheimer for his humanitarian efforts on December 16th, 2024. Now be it resolved that I, Daniel DePaola, on behalf of the governing body and the residents of the Borough of Emerson, congratulate Dan O'Brien for being a recipient of a 2024 Hometown Hero Award and commend his selfless actions, not only to those in his hometown, but to those in need in the mountains of North Carolina. Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you, council. Everybody here. I'm speechless. I, I'm so humbled. I'm just a guy who tried to make a little bit of difference. But after going there and seeing, I mean, you, you wouldn't believe what they went through and the devastation and the flooding. In the mountainous regions, the water just came down like torrents. And I've been involved, and you know I'm a long-time volunteer fireman, Emerson ex-chief, currently on another department, but whatever, and when I saw some of the departments down there and what they had gone through, I was just moved like there was no tomorrow. So the Pensacola Fire Department in North Carolina, I saw their truck sitting out in the middle of the field, and I'm like, what's with that? And they're like, well, that's as far as we could get it. Really? I'm like, well, where's the firehouse? And they pointed over there, and it was this concrete slab. The firehouse was gone. Everything they had is gone. And then I got involved with a, um, walk cross from the Tennessee Fire Department, who's right over the border, and they share and, and like, we have mutual aid agreements here. They do with North Carolina. They lost their mini pumper in a flood. They were rescuing somebody on the highway, and the flood came up, and the truck went underwater while it was running. They lost all their rescue equipment. They lost the truck. Thank God, they didn't lose any lives. But I was able to, the Somerville Fire Department donated over $100,000 worth of Hearst rescue equipment, which we trucked down there for them. Um, I got them hose and turnout gear and appliances and just all kinds of fire department equipment, and there's still stuff coming to my shop every day. That's gonna be the next thing that's gonna go down on our, on our next trip. Hopefully, there'll be a fire engine on my land all going down there, but that's up to you guys to discuss about, okay? And again, I'm, I'm so humbled that this came to me. I'm just, I'm just a guy. I'm just a guy and a fireman, and I try to help people that need help. And, and thank you.
And you're doing a good job at it.
Well, that's, thank you. Thank you to everyone. It's been really... I'm gonna cry. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, sir.
Thank you. I don't know, you put this all together. Thank you.
God bless us.
Thank you all. Thank you.
God bless, Dan. Thank you. Oh, Dan, let's take a picture. I'm sorry.
Oh, you would? Uh, so I got, uh, it's the Centerview Volunteer Fire Department in Newport, Tennessee.
Is in need of a fire.
Chief Dawson. They had an engine. It got, it wasn't in good shape, but Helene did it. Okay? And if you guys do move forward, please, that's where, that's where your engine is gonna go. And the, um, Pensacola Fire Department was able to get two engines, which I have no idea if there's been a long process since November, um, but we're still looking for a mini pumper and a tanker. So I'm down to mission.
Come back up, people. Let's take a picture. And then, um, hold up your little board. That's in the flag? Perfect. Again, congratulations and thank you for all your efforts. Michelle does a good job writing.
Thank you.
I'll edit them a little bit, but she does a great job. Sometimes it's hard. You have to know the person for 20 years. So what Dan is alluding to for the public is, as everyone knows, um, we recently acquired a new fire truck, and we have engine, and we have one that is, um, out of service. And it, we will be deliberating later in closed session as to whether or not the borough is able to donate that to the people of?
Newport, Tennessee.
Centerview Fire Department in Newport, Tennessee.
Yes.
Okay?
That's where, that's where yours will go, yes.
Are there any questions that anyone from the governing body have for Dan about donating it and, and where it would go and how it would get there, or does everybody understand the process already? Just because he's here now and he won't be enclosed later? You all understand? Okay, good. All right.
My truck, my fuel, my calls, I'll transport. I heard over $1,500 worth of fuel there and back in the truck.
Commendable, which is why you were so deserving of the award, Dan.
I did. Thank, thank you.
You're very welcome. So now, in February, we also celebrate Black History Month and recognize American Heart Health Month. All proclamations will be posted on the borough, in Borough Hall and on our website. Um, appointments, tonight, I would like to appoint Alan Salamando as the Class C member of the Historic Preservation Committee for the unexpired term ending December 31st, 2026. Alan will be administered his oath at a future Historic Preservation meeting, and we appreciate your agreeing to serve Alan. Next on the agenda, may I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 82-25 to award a professional services contract using the fair and open process in accordance with the New Jersey Local Pay-to-Play Law pursuant to NJSA 19:44A-20.4 et cetera, fair and open for term through December 31st, 2025, to Jeffrey D. Mueller Esquire Alternate Municipal Prosecutor. May I have that motion? Roll call, please. Councilwoman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sayers? Council President Argenzia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Timmerman?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Chalino?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is minutes for approval. May I have a motion to table the approval of the minutes of the January 28th, 2025 meeting until March 4th, 2025 meeting? Roll call, please. Councilwoman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sayers?
Yes.
Council President Argenzia? Councilwoman Timmerman?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Chalino?
Yes.
Correspondence, number seven. All correspondence is on file in the clerk's office. Financial business, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 83-25 to approve the February 18th, 2025 bills list? Roll call, please. Councilwoman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sayers?
Yes.
Council President Argenzia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Timmerman?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Chalino?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is discussion. Uh, there is no unfinished business. That brings us to, um, new business, discussion of revision to flood damage prevention ordinance. Dave Atkinson from Negligent Engineering is here with us this evening. Dave, do you want to discuss this with us?
I'm sure I can go into that briefly. Um, so, quick and short, the state in Jersey has mandated, particularly in Burton County towns, to update your, uh, flood management ordinance, flood damage prevention ordinance. There's just some different things they're looking to incorporate into it. It's basically state mandated stuff, um, as well as just to update and make sure that we have the, uh, current, um, flood plain manager for the borough, as well as the effective flood maps as part of that. I believe you guys would have updated your, that, that ordinance, um, probably like three or four years ago when the mapping was updated by the, by FEMA. So it's actually just mandated language that needs to get incorporated into the, into the borough's ordinance.
Okay, the language, um, are you gonna suggest the language for us in order to insert it?
Well, the language, they, the state has provided a draft of the language that they're looking to have in there, by record.
So there's a boilerplate?
It's a boilerplate, and that's typically what most of the towns have followed in, in years past.
And we just have to pass it in order to, to, to be in regulation with the state?
Correct. Yeah. So the first step would be to draft it, uh, get that sent to the state for their review. Once they give us the green light, then we would go through the process of adopting the new ordinance.
Okay. Um, does anybody have any questions or comments for Dave? All right, and what, is there a deadline to pass that?
Uh, I think the draft needs to be March, mid-March, I think. Mid-March 15th, I think, is the date.
Okay, so we'll make sure that that's on our next agenda.
And then ultimately, I think it has to be in place by the end of June.
Okay. And then we have a discussion of Assembly Bill A 4649 to provide access to periodic cancer screening examinations for volunteer firefighters through state health benef, through our state health benefits plan, physicians and other providers. Mr. Hermanson, do you want to elaborate on this for the council?
Yes.
Would you want to move that briefcase, please?
This bill has been, uh, been proposed multiple times at the state level. Unfortunately, it has, um, sometimes it's, it has, has failed, and it has continued to come back. Uh, and this time, our state senator, Holly Shapizzi, has put, has asked, uh, for the towns to get behind this bill, uh, in support of it, which would allow screening for our volunteer firefighters, um, which, for cancer. Uh, because obviously, as we know, a lot of the fires that are ca, that we have cause, some of the things that burn cause cancer. Uh, right now, our state, the paid firefighters are all part of this program and are able to be screened for cancer. And what they're asking for is our volunteer firefighters to be used as a state benefit health plan, uh, for, have $1,250 towards screening over a three-year period. Uh, they're asking for that to go, go through, uh, and have the state benefit plan, uh, that we have, to have our volunteer firefighters covered by this, for the screening. So they're asking for the governing bodies to support the, uh, the amendment to go down and go from there.
Um, I think this has a lot of merit. I think it's something that, um, we should support for our volunteers. Um, how does everybody else feel? Yeah, so we should write, we have a resolution to endorse, or are we writing a resolution?
We have to put it on at the next meeting.
Put it on for the March meeting?
Yes. So as we discussed, I, I, I did speak to our fire chief, and he, uh, he is, he was away, but he was going to write something to, in support of this also for the, for the members.
Okay. Everybody on this end okay with that?
Yeah, just when it says periodic, periodic, how often?
For them, so they can test for three years.
Every three years?
For, they can test each year, but they, when you...
Only up to three years?
As of right now, it's, for the first three years, it's $1,250 towards the screening. So that's, they basically recommend...
Per fireman.
Per firefighter, yeah. So how...
And that's what we're asking for, is for each one of our firemen to be able to be tested for a three-year period for $1,250 each.
That's, we, that would be up after the resolution. See what would happen again at the state. The state would have to pass it again. Yeah. And, um, obviously, those members who are firefighters who work for the towns and work locally, you know, work, are already covered. These would be for firefighters who are not part of the state plan.
Okay, thank you. So we will put that on the agenda for, when's our next meeting? March, March 4th? Okay. Um, our next item on the agenda is introduction of ordinances. There are no ordinances to introduce this evening. Adoption of ordinances. This is the second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 1697-25. Ms. Ryan, would you please read the title of this ordinance? Sure, Mayor. This is ordinance number 1697-25, an ordinance of the Borough of Emerson, Burton County, New Jersey, to amend Chapter 77, Police Department, Section 15, Outside Employment, Article 2, an escrow deposit by prospective employer. Thank you. Uh, may I have a motion to open the meeting for public comment on this and this ordinance only? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are open to the public on ordinance number 1697-25. Seeing no hands, may I have a motion to close the public comment on this ordinance? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with no more requests, may I have a motion to, oh, I did that already. Um, everyone's all in favor. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 1697-25 on second reading? Second from Rice, and a roll call, please. Councilwoman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sayers?
Yes.
Council President Argenzia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Timmerman?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Chalino?
Yes.
Very good, which brings us to reports. We're really buzzing through this meeting. Councilwoman Rice, do you have a report for us this evening?
Uh, I just have one from...
Please use your mic.
Environmental, um, let's see. Where, okay, so as of today, the application for the garden, um, should be on the website, uh, the borough website, so go have a look if you're interested in getting a plot at the garden this summer. Um, also, they're in the process of planning for Earth Month, the busiest month of the year for the Environmental Commission. Um, they have a lot of good things planned, the garden opening, some yoga, a hike in the woods, some story time at the library, some crafts, the DPW truck event. So everyone, keep your eyes peeled, uh, for all information coming for that month. And, um, no, I think that's, that's all. Yeah, we're good.
That's good. Okay, um, Councilwoman Sayers, do you have any report for us this evening?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Timmerman, do you have a report for us this evening?
I don't have one this evening, nothing.
Nothing. Councilwoman Chalino?
I sure do.
Okay, we're ready.
From the DPW. Uh, the DPW has been keeping up with the snowstorms. Uh, please be advised, they are having problems with salt deliveries coming out of Port Newark. Uh, the DPW superintendents have a meeting scheduled with the county on Wednesday to rectify the problem. The DPW has charged Burton County $5,290 for plowing county roads on February 2nd, 11th, and 14th. The DPW is working on securing the seating in court as per court clerk mandate. The DPW superintendent and recycling coordinator attended mandatory recycling seminar, and they are happy to report a monthly savings in our electric bill of $363.14 for the Cindy Lane sewer pump. The savings is a result of replacing the old outdated pumps at Cindy Lane with new energy-efficient pumps. Our bill for January 2024 was $543.28, and January 2025, $180.14. I do not have any reports from Historical Committee, um, for Land Use Board. Um, let me get to that report. Hang on one second. Uh, they'd like to let the public know that there is a meeting on Thursday, the 20th, dedicated to the family promise application. Uh, this is looking to convert an office building at 436 Old Hook Road into a residential second floor and common areas on the first floor. Um, the public is welcome to attend this meeting and hear all about the process that's been going on. Um, and ambulance corps, uh, nothing to report.
Very good. Council President, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do have a brief one. Um, the Board of Health did meet this Thursday, this past Thursday, um, it was status quo, so they were good. And Emerson Fire Department had a total of 26 calls for the month of January and 473.51 man-hours between incidents and administration.
That's it?
Yeah, brief.
Moving right along. Rob, do you have a report?
I usually follow you, so that's where I don't step on your terms.
If you want to go, um, if you want to go right now?
Sure.
And then I, I'll make sure that I don't...
Okay.
Copycat you.
Well, I'm gonna, uh, tie in something that Councilwoman Chalino said. Um, we did receive, uh, a, a voice message from one of our residents to just, to thank our DPW for the great job that they've done on the, on the road, clearing the road. Um, he said that the, I just wanted to, you know, pay, you know, pay, uh, you know, some, some props to the, to our department because, as you've gone around in Burton County, this gentleman was saying who lives on Furman, that he, as he goes through throughout the county and works, that there is nobody who has their roads that look like ours, uh, that, especially after that one last storm, uh, last week. He said the roads were icy everywhere else, but here, there was blacktop, uh, and he really appreciates everything that our DPW does, and I just wanted to put that on the record, uh, because Perry was very proud of receiving that, you know, getting that, uh, voice message. Uh, we received an open space, uh, note for our letter of, for our open space grant. The letter of intent needs to be in by March 28th, uh, which we, just, that's just to let us know that we are going to be intending to put in for a, for the grant. Then we would have, we have to apply by April 25th. So we're going to work together, uh, with the Grant Committee, Recreation, and, uh, and everyone on this to figure out what we're, where we're gonna go and what we, what we would like to put in, uh, for this year for, for the grant. And we would apply, like I said, we have to apply by April 25th on that. So any, we'll look forward to recommendations from the governing body of what we should look into and what we, uh, what our, you know, plan of attack on that.
I think the plan, wasn't it to go forward with more, um, playground equipment in order to match the other?
I think, but that's, but we have to figure out which ones, and so depending upon your, what your thoughts are based, that's what I'm saying. We'll, we'll finalize where and how and what that has to go through.
I just want to ask the council right off the cuff, does anyone have any other idea that we would have to talk about in committee, or is everyone okay with moving on with playground equipment? Anything else out of the box, other than playground equipment?
Pull your mics down.
I'm good with the playgrounds. I just, I think we should finalize where we want to...
Yes, we could do that in committee, but I just wanted to make sure that's what we were gonna hammer down on, was the, was the playground equipment. Yeah, everyone's good with that? Okay, good. All right. I just didn't want any surprises when we went into committee. We're like, wow, I thought we were doing the playground equipment again. Okay.
Our CFO is working very, very diligently and very hard on our budget, uh, which we'll be seeing at the next meeting. And, um, so, uh, well, as I said, they continue to work, uh, she continues to work very hard, uh, to try to figure out the best ways of, uh, bringing the best budget and the best thing to, best possible to the, to the residents here in Emerson.
What date are we introducing the budget?
I believe it'd be at the next meeting. I think it's the, the next one or the one, or maybe it's, maybe, I'm sorry.
I don't know how that's...
It could be later. It could be later. I'm sorry.
We're only at the budget meeting.
That's my bad. That's, I'd have to check.
Rob, we still have to do department heads and...
I, I'm thinking the next, we're having a, a budget meeting, I'm saying, I think, with the, for everybody to discuss for department heads and, like I said, but, but we're, we're working on that very diligently right now to try to come up with the best numbers for everybody.
Okay. Um, if you would follow up with Lauren and put a schedule together so that we, the budget committee could...
I'll check that, yeah. I'm sorry, I, I do have a schedule for her on that, too. I'm sorry, I, I do have a schedule for her on that, to, to put it forth. We've been meeting with our vendors in regards to the streaming of the meetings. We're again, as of tonight, so far, so good. I know that this has been a concern to all of us and to the governing body and to the, to administration of making sure that the, the streaming is working. We have met with the vendors and we're awaiting one more vendor to come back to us with a, with pricing. Randolph Pump Station, I believe that Dave will tie in with that, quick, quick over there with me on this. Sure.
So Randolph Pump Station, based on our last communications, which were on Friday, the vendor has in their possession all the parts to, to construct the control panel for the new pump station stuff we're doing. The pumps, the actual pumps themselves should be arriving the end of the month. Based on our communication, everything is on schedule for the April installation work for this pump station, so everything's on target as of Friday.
Well, it has to be, otherwise we lose the grant, right?
Yes. But the, the critical path was the.
And this has only been because it's been a supply chain problem, not any part of anyone.
No.
That is correct.
Yeah.
And we are, we are diligently working with the vendor right now to keep us abreast of exactly when the items are being delivered, not just when they have, you know, the product, but we want to make sure they're there because it does take time then to build the control panel in order to make that. So we're making sure that everything is in check to make sure we make the April 30th deadline that we're, that we have put in place.
Okay. Dave, do you want to, are you finished with your report?
I have one last thing. Our Military Tribute Banner Program is up and running for 2025. Banners are to honor our veterans who currently live or have resided in Emerson. The Borough has made this program available to our residents who wish to honor their family members by contributing $200 for the banners. The banners will be on display from Memorial Day through Veterans Day and are stored by our Department of Public Works during the winter months and will be rehung every year as long as they are in good shape. We concluded our second year of the program with 51 banners and look forward to displaying many more this year. We already have a few in the hopper. This is our way of saying thank you to the men and women of our great United States military. The sponsorship rate again is $200 per banner. It is tax deductible. Please place your order by April 30th in order to have them displayed by Memorial Day.
Okay.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Dave, do you want to go on with your report? I'll do mine last.
Sure. So we talked about Randolph App Pump Station, and that was great news to hear about Cindy Lane Pump Station, that it is saving us some money there, which is on. Want to report the audible push buttons, those have all been installed and everything is functioning at the two locations. As a reminder, they're Old Hook Road and Main Street, and then Kendrick Mac and Van Wagner. So that work has all been completed by the county through a shared service that the Borough worked out with Burton County on that. As the year approaches, we're gonna be working with Public Works to come up with your 2025 road program. We'll have to coordinate with PSCNG since there was a number of projects they were doing in town, so we'll have to work with them to coincide and pick the projects for that. With that said, we also will be looking, last, the last month meeting, you guys authorized to go out to bid for Park App Phase Two, which is the DOT funds that we received for 2024. We received the authorization from DOT as well to go out to bid, so we're just gonna be working with Public Works and the Clerk's Office to come up with a date that works for everybody.
Okay.
So we can get that started once we get the green light from PSCNG, since they were doing work on that road as well. Also, this month, we did have a meeting with Burton County to discuss the flooding problems on Jordan and Forest. At the meeting, we discussed the grant that the Borough had received as well as our.
Who was at that meeting?
At the meeting was Jim Tedesco and the county engineers.
And from the Borough, Rob?
I called in. I, I called in from there, along, Dave was attending the meeting, so I called in. Basically, what we're just going over, what we've already discussed on the, on Jordan, the question then was, what were they allowing us, could we do, what could they do with the monies from, that we received on our, our grant of whether, how it could be used? It really was more of a refresher kind of meeting because of, there was some things that were going back and forth, and we still are waiting on the plan that when you and, when you had attended with us, was discussion of that there's actually still needs to be plans made by an engineer, which is what the discussion was about, of who was gonna make the, where the plans are coming from.
And what, what direction are they gonna?
So ultimately, the discussion, it was a positive discussion with the county. You know, we, what was discussed with them was the next step, which was really what we've talked about, is to do the drainage study so we can determine what the next steps would be as far as what improvements make sense financially as well as from a constructability standpoint. You know, we had submitted a grant application requesting $10 million, which would ultimately be a brand-new culvert from Forest going all the way out to the discharge. You know, the reality of it is, you know, 10 million's a big ask to do there, so we're gonna look and do analysis to determine something that's much more cost-effective. So the study would analyze the existing system, determine your shortfalls, and see what could be done to make improvements to the system. During the meeting, the county talked about stuff that we talked about, which was running a new line down Forest on the West Hand Side, which is a potential option. They are requesting, as part of our due diligence, that we check the soil conditions, because the system will have to be pretty deep to run and change grade over there. So roughly, it would probably be 15 to 20 feet down in the ground at probably the, the high point of the road. So there is concerns of road stability and stuff, so they want to see what the soil conditions are in that area.
And how do we check that? Is that what you're gonna do, or is that what the county?
We would bring in a geotechnical engineer, so they would do soil boring, so we can get an idea of what the soil makeup is over there and have that tested.
Okay.
Ultimately, at the meeting, you know, we discussed the monies that the Borough has in place at the moment. The county was receptive to partnering with us, but would not obviously at this point commit to a number because we don't have a number of what the costs would be. So the initial step would be to do the due diligence and the drainage studies for that area, and then reconvene to discuss the findings and then develop a game plan moving forward on cost sharing and that type of stuff.
Okay. Rob, if there's any other meetings with the county executive, would you please make sure that I know about them so I could attend if it fits into my schedule, please?
I can tell you that I was actually surprised at the county executive, that we were not told originally, the county, it was just really spoke with the engineer.
About the county, please make me aware of them in the future.
Yeah, it was one of those, they just kinda, we threw it out there as requesting it and then.
Well, I'm glad that they're paying attention and I'm happy to hear that the county executive was involved. And I feel a little bad that I wasn't there myself, so in the future, if you guys are making a meeting, just give me a little shout out, because I was unaware that you were having a meeting. Anything else, Dave?
No, and then we did have a meeting with the, I believe it was the DCA, just to discuss, I could talk, to discuss the requirements for the grant and what coordination is needed with them. So we should be receiving emails as far as getting access to their systems so we can monitor and carry that out.
Did you get that today? Because I got it today.
I, I got something, I just don't know if it was, because I'm also doing similar grants in another town, so I got.
Okay.
I know I saw something.
Okay, all right.
And I had to unblock one of them because I think it got thrown into my spam.
Okay, so Lauren got it today, hopefully Rob got it. So we'll make sure that everybody has it.
And that's all that I have on my report, everybody.
All right, and I, I just have one question. Michelle had presented for signature for me the, regarding the Ackerman Basketball Court Project, the change order. What, what was the change order for? And is everything satisfactory, complete? I's dotted, T's crossed, because I know that we had that slight issue with the height of the hoops, and I believe it was corrected, but then the cold weather came and really nobody played on it because the winter came. So I haven't really had feedback from the community as the, how great the basketball courts are. We will do, when the weather breaks, a ribbon cutting there, but they've kind of been dormant, and I just want to make sure that everything's good in your opinion so that we could sign off on that, but I also want to know what the change order was about.
Sure. So ultimately, as far as the project, everything's 100% complete at the site. You know, what was submitted to you was the payment number two and final, as well as the change order. The change order consisted of a number of different items. Essentially, you had pluses and minuses from your existing contract items that you had on there. As far as the add-ons, there was some additional asphalt that was put on, put into the project to kind of alter the grades, to make sure we had the proper slopes and stuff to satisfy the color coding warranty. There was some additional grading around the perimeter of the basketball courts to ensure that there was no tripping hazards or anything around there. And then additional was some added cost for the hoops. Now, I know obviously we had issues with the elevations with them, but ultimately, the add-on of the hoop stuff was to get the adjustments that were needed to satisfy the 10-foot height that was.
Well, why did we have to pay to have them hung correctly?
So the grades were adjusted, the way your backboards and posts and stuff were set there, everything was at fixed elevation, meaning you can't adjust the height of the backboards. So you had to get a backboard that's adjustable in height, so you can adjust the grades, the height of it, to get your 10-foot.
Right, but some of them were hung at like 8.3, I believe, so that wasn't part of the specs. It was supposed to, the spec said 10-foot.
Well, the spec was to put them back to how they were. To be honest with you, your backboards, if you were to have measured them prior to the project, weren't at 10 feet in some of the locations.
That's the first I'm hearing of it, because when the new ones went up, I immediately got phone calls that they were too low. No one ever said they were too low prior to the work being done.
And to be honest, if they're off by a couple inches, nobody's really gonna know the difference between a couple inches. That was, they were off by, they were off by two foot, which, that's a significant.
Yeah, all right, let, let's talk about that offline, because I'm not 100% about that change order. All right, but I don't want to get into it right now.
No, that's fine.
I need more information.
Sure.
Okay, do you have anything else to report?
I do not.
All right, then I'm gonna get into my long, boring report. Next Wednesday, February 26th, at 6:00 PM, the Borough will be holding our first Welcome Ramadan Crescent Moonlighting Ceremony. Please join us on the front lawn of Borough Hall to help celebrate as a community and mark the start of Ramadan alongside our Muslim residents and friends. All are invited, light refreshments will be served. The 2020, February 26th at 6:00 PM. 2025 commuter parking permits are available on Emerson Plaza East. The fee for resident parking is $250, and they are available at Police Headquarters from 8:30 AM to 7:30 PM. I see a lot of posts on Facebook. Anybody have this guy knock on their door? Does anybody know who this guy is? There's a way to stop that. You could have a no-knock registration placard on your door, which means that no one soliciting for commerce can knock on your door. If you get the no-knock, religious and political is always allowed to knock, but it's free if you are 65 years or older, it's a $5 fee for the decal, and it could stop a lot of those unwanted people knocking on your door. And I want to remind people that if someone is knocking on your door and you do not recognize them and you do not want them there, posting on Facebook is not the best way to go about it. Picking up the phone and calling the police and letting them know that there's a stranger in your neighborhood and an unwanted caller is, is the way to go about it, and it helps keep us safe and keep people that don't belong in our neighborhoods off our streets. 2025 dog and cat registrations were due by January 31st. Late registration is now in effect. Applications received thereafter will have a $25 late fee imposed. Applications can be found on the Borough website under Board of Health, and they were also included in the Garbage and Recycling Newsletter, or you can contact Mary at extension 1213 at the Borough's main number. Our senior meeting was canceled due to weather last week. Their new meeting date is Thursday, February 20th this week at noon. They will be celebrating Valentine's Day, which was passed postponed because of the weather. New members are always welcome, and if you want to come to this meeting this Thursday, you'll be coming to a party, so that's always nice to come to. If you're interested in more information on the senior club, you can visit www.EmersonNJ.org/seniors. I know they have a trip coming up in March to the Brownstone for St. Patrick's Day, and a lot of other fun events, so if you are a senior, and seniors now are 55 and older, if you are a senior, please come on down if you're, if you're free during the day. The Burton County Clerk Satellite Office will be here again on Wednesday, March 26th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Senior Center. Walk-ins are welcome, and you could do a host of things that day, including notary oaths, processing photo cards for seniors, veterans, and exempt firemen, as well as getting a passport and other services. I was happy to attend the Greater Pascak Valley Chamber of Commerce Mayor's Breakfast in late January to promote Emerson. I think that was pretty well-covered in the Pascak Press. I think they did two different issues on it, one issue and then another issue. The senior bus is available to our residents age 55 and up, and to those with special needs. It runs each week on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Please call Stacy to book a ride. In addition, the County of Bergen offices senior van services as well. If it's outside of our coverage, coverage area and it is to go to a doctor's appointment, they will take you there for free as well. And in order to call the County of Bergen for a ride outside of Emerson, Oradell, Westwood, Paramus, you can call 201-368-5955. You do have to call a full week in advance, or as soon as you book your doctor's appointment, it is not as flexible as our senior bus, but it is available to residents, senior residents. Congress and Gottheimer's Office will be coming to Borough Hall before our mayor and council meeting on Tuesday, March 4th, from 6:30 to 7:30 to provide constituent services on federal matters such as unemployment issues, Medicare, IRS, Social Security, passport, VA benefits, and service medals. No appointment is necessary. The, more information on that will be posted on the website. The First Burton County Utilities Authority Household Hazardous Waste Collection of 2025 will be held on Saturday, March 8th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM in Moonaki. Please visit the BCUA website for more information. Mark your calendars and get your unwanted papers and documents ready. We will be having the Borough Mobile Shredding Day in collaboration with the BCUA, right here in Emerson, May 17th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It will be at Borough Hall. The Borough's Shade Tree Commission will once again plant a tree in memory of those Emerson residents who passed away between January of 2024 and the present in conjunction, conjunction with the 2025 Arbor Day Ceremony in April. More information on the ceremony will be forthcoming, but if you would like your loved one to be remembered at this year's Arbor Day Ceremony, please contact the acting Borough Clerk at 201-262-6086, option nine, or by emailing the Clerk or the Shade Tree Commission. The State of New Jersey has announced this year's property tax relief programs for eligible New Jerseians. New in 2025, there is a single combined application, which simplifies the process to apply for the Senior Frees, Anchor, and Stay New Jersey programs. The deadline to file is October 31st, 2025. A link to the state's website with applications and information will be posted to the homepage of our website, or please feel free to call Lauren at the Tax Office for further information. First quarter taxes were due February 1st. Please contact the Tax Office with any questions. I encourage our residents to sign up to receive emergency notifications and other Borough information through our Rave Alert System. Please call Borough Hall in order to sign up for that, or go onto our website and add yourself, you'll have to create a password. You can also follow us on Facebook and on Twitter and our new Instagram account, @Borough_Emerson. @Borough_Emerson. We're trying to keep up with the times here. And the Emerson Junior Senior High School presentation of Peter Pan is on March 7th through March 15th. To purchase tickets, please call 201-262-4447, extension 1300. And I don't think it's through 7th through the 15th. I think it's like the 7th, 8th, and 9th, and then the... Well, it's each weekend, and then they don't do it during the week. So it's the two weekends, the 7th and the 15th. Please look for any information from the high school on the play. They do wonderful, wonderful productions. The next reading, meeting of the Emerson Governing Body will take place Tuesday, March 4th at 7:30 PM. And I was remiss earlier in not remembering, I also didn't want to throw her off her game when I knew she had to speak shortly after. Remember that our, one of our newest councilwomen's lost her grandmother last week, and our condolences are with her and her family. So sorry. Does anyone else have anything else to add?
I could just make one correction. The budget meeting, that is the second meeting in March here. And the actual budget presentation, for the presentation to the council will be the first meeting in April.
We're having a department head budget meeting here. On what date?
The second meeting, which is the...
And then we will introduce the budget on what day? April 1st?
First, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, just so that it's clear what we're doing on those two dates.
Yeah, want to make sure this way, because I did say it, and I want to make sure I had clarity. But I'm sorry that I misinformed, only gave the wrong dates, that's all.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to repeat it and make sure that we had it. So there was no confusion by the public. Our next item is public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak on any topic by coming to the podium and stating your name for the record. In the interest of time, speakers are limited to three minutes. In consideration of all who may wish to speak, please keep your comments brief and concise. May I have a motion to open the meeting to public comment? Second. Did I get a second? Nicole and Megan, okay? And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are open to the public. Mr. O'Brien.
Just two things. First off, again, thank you very much for all of your, whatever it is you did to get me to this position. I'm so humbled. I moved to this town a long time ago, had my children here, went through school here and all that stuff. And just to be a resident of this borough is something special, and...
I think so, too.
Well, you know, I try, I try to put in what I can, you know, and I try to help where I can, but to be recognized by you guys is just so humbling.
Well, we appreciate everything that you've done for the Borough. I alluded to the fact, I know that over the years, that when they've needed lights for some of our rec sports, you've donated them, and I know that you're always willing to lend a hand. I know you were at the Christmas tree lighting, and you brought the lights for that. And I know that you do a lot for the town, and it's appreciated, Dan, it really is, especially your fire service.
But it comes back to you. You know, when you do, it comes back to you. I just, just, thank you.
It's a beautiful thing.
And also to the DPW, they do, they do a good job. I drive all over. The roads in this town are in good shape compared to some of the others. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you so much. Anybody else? Seeing no hands, may I have a motion to close the public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are... Oh, our clerk, acting clerk would like to do a little report? Oh, I actually, okay, I was going to do that, but do you want to do it?
You can do it.
You know what? So we're streaming. We have audio, we have video. And I want to thank Jimmy from OBS that came this evening. B.I.S.? Every time I see it, it's different, it's a different acronym, acronym, sorry. Appreciate your being here this evening. It's not B.I.S. Appreciate your being here. Of course, as usual, when someone shows up, we have no problems. But we really have been having a lot of problems in your time tonight, and your lovely friend, girlfriend, wife, I'm not sure, wife is appreciated as well. I'm sure you could have thought of something better to do tonight, so it is appreciated. But we seem to have been all systems go tonight, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Actually, it didn't work right away, and Jimmy missed it during the meeting, so...
And did we take a picture of what he did so that we know? I hear that you actually did correct it in...
It was a little something.
A little live correct. Okay, all right, so we're really glad that you were here, even more so, so thank you very much. Anything else you'd like to say?
No.
Okay, I actually wrote that down to say, and then I forgot to do it. So at this point, we are going to our resolutions on consent agenda. They are considered routine and will be acted on by one motion vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of the items unless the council member's requests an item be removed for consideration. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Resolutions 84, excuse me, dash 25 through 92 dash 25?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I'm sorry.
Timmerman and Rice. May I have a roll call, please? Yes, Councilwoman Rice.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sayers.
Yes.
Council President Argenzia. Councilwoman Timmerman.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Cholino.
Yes.
Okay, very good. That brings us to closed executive session. May I have a motion to go into closed executive session to discuss matters exempt from the public pursuant to NJSA 10-4-1 at second adequately noticed by Resolution 93-25? Roll call, please. Councilwoman Rice.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sayers.
Yes.
Council President Argenzia. Councilwoman Timmerman.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Cholino.
Yes.
Thank you. We are now going into closed. Members of the public may remain on YouTube until we return to open session, at which time formal action. Motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Second. Do we have any, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any further business?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Borough Administrator to make an offer of conditional employment for the position of Recreation Secretary.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
And a roll call, please. Councilwoman Rice.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sayers.
Yes.
Council President Argenzia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Timmerman.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Cholino.
Yes.
We should do it? All right, I think that we have other business. Mr. Dan O'Brien was here, and he is willing to drive... I don't have the La Forge, La France.
France.
A 1998.
Okay, so Mr. Dan O'Brien is taking to Tennessee a donation from the Borough of a 1998 American La France fire pumper for the amount of $1. Can I get a motion to approve that for the Centerview Fire Department in Newport, Tennessee?
Can I rephrase that, that statement there? That we are essentially, that we are essentially...
Selling it for $1?
Selling it for $1 to the state of Tennessee and whatever jurisdiction that he mentioned earlier that he wanted to bring it to.
Centerview, Tennessee.
So it would be for the sale, we approved for a sale of $1.
Okay. Who would like to make that motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
And a roll call, please. Councilwoman Rice.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sayers.
Yes.
Council President Argenzia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Timmerman.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Cholino.
Yes.
And I know I speak for the whole council when I say that we are pleased to be able to help those less fortunate that have been affected by natural disaster. Do we have any other further business? With hearing no other business, may I have a motion to adjourn at 10:31?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you for coming.